Aye.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The mission of Sunnybrook School District 171 is to maximize student achievement by cultivating critical thinking skills, innovative instructional practices, and a collaborative school, home, and community partnership. We're gonna start with Ambrose is present. Belos Davis?
Present.
Thompson? Hill?
Here.
LaShaw?
Yes.
I recommend motion to move into closed session for the purpose of appointment, compensation, student discipline, performance for dismissal of specific employees of the district. So motion by LaShaw, second by Hill. Uh, LaShaw?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Uh, Thompson? Ambrose, yes, Belos Davis?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to close this at 6:30. Two. Two. I recommend motion to, oh, don't give motion to return, or you just have a motion to return to open session?
Aye.
Second? That's a motion by LaShaw, second by Hill to return to open session, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are at item I, recommend motion to adopt the administration's recommendation regarding the expulsion of student 2023-01 as presented. Prior to um, this motion, I just wanna say we as a board took all the information into account. Um, we don't want anyone to feel that they are less than or greater than the other. We care about the students, we care about the staff. However, um, I need a motion for this, for this.
Motion, you just, you just read out what your decision is.
Okay, so we, we have decided that our student would not be expelled.
Then it's a recommended motion so that the student, student question would not be expelled.
Yeah. Can I get a motion?
Aye.
Second?
That's a motion by LaShaw, a second by Hill, that the student not be expelled. Let me put this in here. Uh, 2023-01 is presented, LaShaw?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Belos Davis?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Ambrose is also a yes.
So just, just for the clarity of it, the, um, the Ms. LaShaw will be writing up a correspondence to send to the, to the family of the board's, board's decision.
Also, we trying to say this the right way.
Anything else that the, anything else that the board is implicating or would like to see done with the student is not up for debate in public forum because of this. Anything else that the, anything else that the board is implicating or would like to see done with the student that's not up for debate in public forum because this is the student that we're talking about?
Right.
But that will be shared with the building administration and it will be sent to the parent and written for.
Thank you. Thank you. That's what I'm striking for. Thank you. Okay, we are at item F. Any person wishing to address the board about an item that is on the agenda should do so when the item is up for discussion. Visitor statements will be limited to two minutes per person. A total of thirty minutes will be allocated for visitor comments. All comments about items not on the agenda will be held until the visitor's statement at the end of the meeting. Items related to personnel issues will be re-erected to the appropriate administrator. Uh, we are at item G, consent agenda, recommend motion to approve the regular board of education meeting minutes of March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. April expenses and May, March payroll in the amount of one million, two hundred seventy-eight thousand, four hundred twenty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents as presented.
Motion.
That's a motion by LaShaw and a second by Thompson. LaShaw?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Ambrose, yes, Velos Davis?
Yes.
We are at item H, communications. Do we have anything? That's from the board, right? I don't think we have any communications at this time. We're at, oh, no, that's not true. Item I, board reports, we don't have anything at this app. We're at item J now, administrator reports, Dr. Erica Milhouse, head of superintendent.
I just want to remind everyone and welcome everyone to actively participate with, with your Sunnybrook family on May sixth. Another affair that I'm starting to get like really excited about. It's a good neighbor day, good neighbor day parade, which this gentleman here has heard about all our ideals of what we're going to be doing there. But come join us. I promise this year we have a wagon full of candy. I learned from my mistakes last year. I'm good. So just know May sixth, Ms. Cambridge is going to speak more about what's going to happen that day, but I, I've grown to really, really love that. It's a good community turnout, so we're just encouraging everybody just to come out and support your Sunnybrook family.
Thank you. Dr. Lori Olin Strands, Assistant Superintendent, Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
Good evening, Dr. Milhouse Pettis and school board members and to our Sunnybrook community. Uh, thank you for giving me this opportunity to talk today and I'm going to discuss our summer enrichment program and the classes we're going to be offering. So this year we're doing summer school a little different and it's going to be an enrichment program because we analyzed our data and saw that last year we had a couple of enrichments and the attendance for our standard summer school was not great, but our enrichment programs had almost a hundred percent attendance. So this year we took a spin off of that and we're going to have only enrichment programs. So our first enrichment program is going to be create a book. It's going to be available for third through fifth grade. Students will write and illustrate their own hardcover book. We're going to have basketball camp again and that's going to be for our students in grades fifth through seventh. Students will learn or enhance their basic basketball skills. We will also have a book club fund for grades first through second. Students will read and focus on one book a week. The children will complete book-related activities about each book that they're reading. We will also have a STEM club that will be eligible for grades third through fourth grade. Students will work together to reinforce their teamwork and cooperative learning skills through robotics and coding to produce a moving robot. We will also have immersion into the world of reading for sixth and seventh graders. It's a program which will connect history and geography to reading, so students will be able to truly understand, comprehend, and visualize the words on pages. We will also have hit it straight. This program is designed to introduce and teach students golfing language, putting, uh, putting, sorry, stance, grip, alignment, full swing, posture, balance, and tempo, and all the equipment will be provided. We will have math tutoring for grades first through sixth grade and that will be given to our students by math muscle. Each student will get one day a week and they will have four hours on that day. Together, we will maximize our students' ability by teaching them to simplify complex concepts, practice real-world applications, which allow them to become confident in approaching math. Uh, please check our website, Monday, April twenty-fourth. All programs will be shared with a flyer and a signup form will be available for you. It is based on a first come, first served basis, so please act fast. All who are interested will need to complete the form by May eleventh at three thirty. Thank you for your time and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Mr. David Schrader, chief school business official. Thank you. Ms. Julianne Green, Director of Special Services.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just wanted to give everybody an update that we do have the dental bus coming again. They're coming out to the district on April twenty-fifth and May second. Last time they came, they had the opportunity to connect with approximately a hundred and forty Sunnybrook students. We're going to connect with many of those again. Okay, so we're looking forward to that. Also, we have less than thirty days of school left, but there's still lots of learning going on. Uh, we're all looking forward to summer, but we are working. Um, we have actually a chronic absenteeism team, which consists of members of both buildings. And we're working closely with students who are struggling with attendance right now and families of those students who are making great progress. So we plan on giving you some proactive planning. There'll be forthcoming on the later next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Mike McGowan, Director of Technology.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's hard to talk about this, but we're already in our planning phases for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So this is just a reminder that registration for next year is open and we are encouraging everybody to jump into our school, get registered up for next year because that does impact a lot of our plannings. Earlier, everybody registers the better. So as usual, if there's anybody needs help, it's just email support at sc171.org and somebody from my team will be more than happy to help out individuals. And just one other enhancement this year for registration, we always have Spanish available, but we now do also have registration forms in Arabic. So we're covering all of our, covering all of our languages where parents are supposed to.
Thank you, thank you. Um, Ms. Chantel Cambridge, Principal Heritage Middle School, happy birthday.
Thank you, thank you. I cannot believe our age is twenty-one. I'm so excited. Thank you for having me, Sunnybrook Board of Education, Dr. Milhouse Pettis. So just a quick update, we have our Scholastic Bowl tomorrow. We won last year and so we're hoping to bring home the win this year as well. I'm sure we will, our students and Mrs. Switzer have to work and really hard to prepare for the bowl. Our first track meet is also tomorrow. Uh, we'll be at TF South. I didn't know. Yes, we'll be at TF South. Um, it's an intramural, so we'll be running against each other. However, this will, this will be good practice for the track meet on Thursday at North. Um, the National Junior Honor Society induction ceremony will be held this Thursday, April twentieth at six-thirty in this beautiful space that we're in now. I promise I'll have you guys run ice and rain. Um, thanks again to Mrs. Switzer for all of her work and dedication that she's put into uh, the students, the NJHS ceremony. Um, our student council will be attending the state convention in Springfield on Saturday. So that'll be something um, that they haven't done in a few years. Uh, they will be participating. It will be a overnight convention where they will learn how to run student council, what that looks like, and they'll be able to collaborate with other student councils uh, throughout the state. And then as Dr. Pettis mentioned, the um, good neighbors day parade. So the chorus led by Ms. Hill will be participating in American scenes. So American scenes is um, we're collaborating with all of the districts in our area and there'll be one big choir, one sound, one voice. There'll be a um, practice ceremony over at the Hanger on Friday night and then they'll be uh, competing at the, the neighbors day parade. And so we're hoping everybody to come out and support. Uh, somebody mentioned to me about the countdown. Hashtag two-seven will probably be in next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Joseph Kidd, Principal Nathan Hill School. Thank you. Uh, Policy Committee to waive the second reading of, uh, we have a motion to uh, waive the second reading and adopt policies.
Motion.
That's a motion by LaShaw and a second by Thompson. Uh, LaShaw?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Ambrose, yes. Uh, Velos Davis?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Uh, we are at item K, informational items. Uh, the first one is a four-year request, local labs requesting the district's current mission statement.
That was Hill.
Okay, and we have a second, uh, four-year request, Melinda Creasy, finishing Chicago, requesting bid tabulations.
That too.
Okay. All right. And we are at item L, we are at terminations. Recommend motion to approve the termination of Mr. Jonathan Franks, full-time custodian effective March twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three as presented.
Motion.
Second.
That's a motion by LaShaw, a second by Hill. LaShaw?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Uh, Velos Davis?
Upstate.
Thompson?
Yes.
Ambrose is yes. Uh, L two, recommend motion to approve the termination of Mr. Anthony James, full-time custodian effective April third, twenty twenty-three as presented.
Motion.
That's a motion by Velos Davis, a second by LaShaw. Velos Davis?
Yes.
LaShaw?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Ambrose is also yes. Uh, recommend motion to approve the quote from ITR Systems to test and relocate the Nathan Hill PA system along with the system upgrades at both Nathan Hill and Heritage in the amount of nineteen thousand, two hundred ninety-eight dollars as presented.
Motion.
Second.
That's a motion by LaShaw, a second by Hill. LaShaw?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Uh, Ambrose, yes, Velos Davis?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Recommend motion to approve the purchase of classroom furniture for Heritage Middle School from KI in the amount of forty-six thousand, eight hundred fourteen dollars and fifty, fifty cent as presented. So motion by Thompson and a second by LaShaw. Thompson?
Yes.
LaShaw?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Ambrose, yes. Velos Davis?
Yes.
Uh, recommend motion to approve the honorable dismissals for the following pair of professionals, Nathan Hill School, Tracy Van Witsenberg, Roxanne White, Jacqueline Rosas, Viviana Lopez, Autumn Richards, Jerry Lawrence, Carol Lindville, Heritage Middle School, R. C. Lee Vargas, Carol Wallace, Gina Robertson, Carolyn Hilliard, Crystal Moore, Katrina Wade, Kimberly Mayfield Jones as presented. That's a motion by LaShaw, a second by Thompson. LaShaw?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Uh, Velos Davis?
Yep.
Ambrose, yes, Hill?
Yes.
Recommend motion to approve the purchase of six round cafeteria tables for Heritage Middle School from educational environments in the amount of twenty-two thousand, eighteen dollars and sixteen cents as presented.
Second.
That's a motion by LaShaw, a second by Hill. LaShaw?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Ambrose, yes. Velos Davis?
Yes.
Thompson? Uh, motion to approve the employment of Ms. An- Annaceli Basglaz as full-time food server at Nathan Hill School. Salary as per contract effective August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three is presented.
Second.
That's a motion by LaShaw, a second by Velos Davis. LaShaw?
Yes.
Velos Davis?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Ambrose, yes. Recommend motion to approve the employment of Ms. Rosa Leah Aronbula as part-time food server at Heritage Middle School. Salary of seventeen dollars per hour effective August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three is presented. So motion by LaShaw, second by Velos Davis. LaShaw?
Yes.
Velos Davis?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Ambrose is also yes. Uh, motion to designate David Schrader as representative and Sherry Hooton as alternative representative to represent Sunny, Sunnybrook School District one seventy-one and the South Suburban Benefit Cooperative Board of Director for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four is presented. That's a motion by LaShaw, second by Thompson. LaShaw?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Velos Davis?
Yes.
Ambrose, yes, Hill?
Yes.
Recommend motion to approve the employment of Mr. Lucian Cambridge, part-time custodian, salary of eighteen dollars per hour effective pending successful background check results as presented. That's a motion by Velos Davis, a second by LaShaw. Velos Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Ambrose is also a yes. Recommend motion to approve the employment of Mr. Dontria Henley as a part-time custodian, salary of eighteen dollars per hour effective pending successful background checks as presented.
Second.
Okay, that's a motion by LaShaw, a second by Hill. Ms. LaShaw?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Uh, Velos Davis?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Ambrose is also a yes. Um, recommend motion to approve the non-renewal of the contract for Dr. Lisa London, K two, special education teacher for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year is presented.
Second.
That's a motion by LaShaw, a second by Hill. LaShaw?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Velos Davis?
Yes.
Ambrose is also a yes. Recommend motion to approve the Ethel Board of Education meeting minutes for March twenty twenty-three is presented.
Second.
That's a motion by LaShaw, second by Hill. Ms. LaShaw?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Ambrose is yes. Velos Davis?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Visitor statements. Any visitor statement? One, twice, okay. Recommend motion to approve, to move, oh, no, not close, sorry. Motion to adjourn the board of education, education meeting at seven fifteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.